Good evening and welcome candidates and audience members to the candidate forum for Mountain View City Council. I am Julie Cates and will be this evening's moderator. I am a member of the League of Women Voters Los Altos Mountain View, who is the host of this forum. Now first, I want to go over a couple of housekeeping items. Our forum will last one hour until eight o'clock P M. And due to the nature of conducting this event as a webinar, we are not able to provide technical assistance to attendees. This candidate forum and all our league candidate forums will be recorded. The recorded versions will be available within two days after each event on our league's website. The League of Women Voters Los Altos Mountain View website is at L W V L A M V dot org. Now, I, as the moderator, will remain visible on your screen along with our candidates and the timer app. Audience members are not shown. You can submit any question about the forum using the Q and A function. When answered, the question and its response will be visible to all attendees. For this webinar, the chat function will not be turned on. Questions for candidates were submitted during the registration process. League members reviewed the questions and selected ones considered relevant to all candidates. And to provide useful information to the audience about issues in this particular race. We have combined similar questions to be able to cover as wide a range of topics as possible with the time amount we have to work with. And due to the number of questions and the restricted length of the webinar, we do not expect that there'll be time to take additional questions for candidates from the audience. A few words as to why it is the League of Women Voters who wanted to host this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization for men and women, in fact, all genders, that promotes informed active participation in government. The league does not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. But after careful study, we do take positions on political issues. The league invites anyone who is interested in supporting democracy and local government to join us. Now, we're using the following format for tonight's forum. Each candidate present will make a one-minute opening statement. Candidates will have sixty seconds to respond to each question. And then finally, each, the candidates will each have one minute to make a closing statement. As you can see, an electronic timer displays each candidate's remaining time and will randomly shuffle the order of candidates responding to each question. Now, we have asked our candidates to abide by the following code of conduct. Be mindful of the time limits. When the timer line turns red, I will say thank you. Finish your response by completing your current sentence. Be respectful. Candidates should not interrupt each other. And fairness. Candidate campaign marketing materials will not be visible on the candidate's screen. So while the city of Mountain View houses the headquarters of many of the world's largest technology companies, it also includes single-family neighborhoods and a growing number of multifamily options. Mountain View faces the regional issues of balancing options for growth while maintaining the character of a vibrant and cosmopolitan community. The Mountain View City Council has seven members. The seven council members are elected at large for four-year terms that are staggered so that three or four council seats are filled at the general municipal election in November of every even-numbered year. And there are three council seats up for election this fall. Four of the five candidates for city council are present on the webinar this evening. A fifth candidate, Justin Cohen, did not respond to our invitation and did not submit a statement to be read in lieu of participating, although invited to do so. I am, will now introduce the four candidates with us this evening in alphabetical order. When introduced, candidate, please raise your hand. Allison Hicks. Elaine, Ellen Camai, Camay, sorry, Ellen Camay. Lucas Ramirez. And Lee Jong. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this evening's forum. Now, we're going to go to opening statements. And remember, the statements, questions, and closing statements will be randomized by our electronic timer. Okay, so are we ready to begin for our opening statements? Is our timer shuffling? Who's going to go first? I think that this means that Ellen Camay, we're ready for your opening statement.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's candidate forum. As was mentioned, my name is Ellen Camay. And the last four years, I've been serving as your council member, including last year as your mayor. Before that, I served six years on the Environmental Planning Commission. I served as the chair and the vice chair. I, my father is Japanese, uh, third generation from Mountain View. My mother's Chinese and Puerto Rican. And because of that, one of the things I've been working on is our multilingual outreach. And as part of our council goals four years ago, I'm proud to be one of the founding council members for our Chinese Language Leadership Academy. Um, I am third-generation Mountain View and um just became a mother, uh, eight months ago to my son, raising the fourth generation of our family here. I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight and talking about a bunch of different topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas Ramirez, you are our second speaker.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Lucas. I have the great honor to serve as your mayor this year. Uh, I also was elected in twenty eighteen, uh, and have had the great privilege to serve uh, with a very ambitious, thoughtful and progressive council. And one of the reasons why I'm running for reelection is because in twenty nineteen, we had uh, as part of our goal-setting uh, process, uh, identified a number of important community objectives, which we were generally not able to achieve because shortly after we completed that process, uh, the pandemic hit us very hard and we had to shift to emergency operations, uh, pandemic relief and recovery. And I think we've done a remarkable job getting through the pandemic. And now we have to shift back to regular operations. And that includes achieving the goals that we told our community we would achieve back in twenty nineteen. Uh, and very similarly, looking forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lee Jong, you may begin your statement.
Hi, my name is Lee Jong. I'm the newcomer for the city council race. I've lived in Mountain View for more than twenty years now and have a deep love for our city and community. I met my husband here and we're raising our high schooler kids in Mountain View, uh, high school at this moment. I have a PhD in chemistry from U C San Diego and an MBA from U C Berkeley. I've been working in the financial industry for the past fifteen years and currently I'm employed at Tesla as a senior financial manager. I decided to run for city council to ensure a great quality of life, even as the city grows. I will prioritize the following things. First, ensure sufficient infrastructure and services to maintain our high quality of life while we expand housing opportunities for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your opening statements. We will now begin the question round. And so.
Can I do my opening statement?
Oh, Allison, did I miss you? I saw, I apologize.
Before, in the last forum, so we're used to it.
Okay, thanks for jumping in, Allison. Go ahead.
So yes, my name is Allison Hicks and I'm the vice mayor right now. I've lived in Mountain View for over twenty years and raised my children here. I ran for council four years ago because clearly Mountain View is growing and I want that growth to be good growth. I have a background in city planning. I helped plan affordable housing, green schoolyards, walkable streets, and revitalized downtowns, just the kind of things we want in Mountain View. Unfortunately, uh, as the mayor said, the pandemic diverted us from a lot of our goals. I'm proud of what we did achieve, uh, ranging from safe parking lots to a car-free downtown. But there's so much more to do. Um, you know, whether it's thriving small businesses, safe bike routes to schools, more parks, tree canopy, um, speeding up our response or to the climate crisis. I ask for your vote so that um, I and the rest of council can achieve those goals we set out to achieve four years ago.
Thank you. So now we've completed the opening statements. We'll move to the question round. And so I think this, this, okay, Lee, you are up first. So here's the question. What is the city doing well? Where is improvement needed and what are one or two changes that you would suggest?
I think, uh, the city is doing well regarding to help with the homeless and accom- accommodating uh, income peo- uh, low-income people and subsidize, uh, using grants to subsidize, uh, uh, the cer- certain low-income population. Um, what I believe the city need to improve is a more balanced approach. Uh, while we're, um, growing, uh, building house rapidly, um, we should definitely ensure the infrastructure in school, parks, and traffics. Um, what the quality of life the residents would want to maintain or still can keep up with the housing, housing developments.
Thank you. Okay, now we would like to hear from Allison Hicks.
Well, I'd say this is a hard one to answer because we're doing well in a lot of areas. Um, but even in the areas, and we're doing model programs that cities in the, uh, region, um, frankly, copy to some degree. Which is a good thing, right? Um, we're not doing enough. So I'll give two examples. One is environmental sustainability. We're do, we are, we're the first city in the county to adopt all electric reach codes and electrify our housing and our transportation is a really important part of fighting climate change. At the same time, I can't say that, that there's nothing left to do in terms of fighting climate change, clearly. Um, and I would say the same thing about what, what Lee has mentioned. We have a lot of model housing programs, particularly those addressing the crisis of homelessness. But we can't say that we solved the homeless crisis. There's much.
Thank you. And Allison, you're, you're going in and out a, a little bit, but it less so when you're, you know, it's sort of talking at an even pace. Um, our next speaker is Lucas Ramirez. And candidates, at any time, if you want me to repeat the question, I am happy to do so. Lucas.
Thank you. Uh, several good answers. I will add to the list, uh, that our fiscal prudence has served us well. We're one of the very few cities that actually, uh, never hit a deficit during the pandemic. And consequently, where many cities had to use their Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds just to maintain the level of municipal services they had been providing. We didn't need to do that because we were fiscally very healthy. And so we were able to invest that money instead, uh, in stabilizing families and small businesses. So I hope we get to talk about that in a little bit. I would say an area for improvement is in development review. Uh, and there are several different ways of looking at this, but I think one area I'd like to focus on is we're consistently, especially for code-compliant projects, those that follow our rules, uh, we're not having outcomes that the community support. And that means we need to spend a little bit more time thinking about the rules and regulations that actually will achieve our community's goals when development occurs. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Ellen.
Great, thank you. So, um, some things that I, I think that we've done well are going to be related to the pandemic. I don't think any of us thought that when we were elected, we would have to, uh, be, you know, tackling this. But some things that we did were, we had a very robust program, whether it was an eviction moratorium, rent relief, our small business assistance, um, providing food. We were very proactive. We had our vaccination site and I was happy to do that last year as mayor. I think we also have been trying to battle the affordability crisis. We tend to meet our market rate housing goals, kind of struggle with the affordable and in particular, our, our middle-income housing. Um, but we are building housing in Mountain View. And as the mayor mentioned, we have, we have a balanced budget. Some things we need to work on are, as the city changes and grows, better outreach, whether that's in language, uh, whether that's doing a larger radius in terms of noticing and making sure that people know what's going on in the community.
Thank you. We're going to move to our second question now. And it looks like, we'll see, I'll read the question. Uh, the city asked residents to share their views on a subject such as R three zoning. But the response is often dominated by a few vocal groups. How can the city increase the effectiveness of communication and outreach to all? And Lucas, you will kick off this, this question.
Thank you. So I'm going to piggyback off of some things that council member today has already mentioned. Uh, one thing we need to do better is improve our translation and interpretation services to allow the many people in the community who don't speak English to participate. Uh, right now, a lot of the outreach is done in English and not in accessible language, right? I, I like to use the R three example, actually, when I'm talking with the city manager. A postcard was sent out, uh, describing the R three update in arcane and technical language. Most people wouldn't read through it and appreciate how important this is. Uh, so many people, I'm sure, didn't participate because we didn't do a good job explaining, uh, what we were trying to achieve. Uh, so, so translation, you know, language access has been a priority for the council. Increasing the outreach, you know, noticing radius, that kind of thing. Uh, and I'd love to, uh, also work with the community to better understand where our community wants to hear from the city. Thank you.
All right. Allison, you are up next.
Thank you. Well, I agree with much of what's already been said, that the, um, the language programs and translation is a very important com- component of communicating with our residents. Um, and also, we, that many of our projects have not been, um, there are questions about the radius with which we send out postcards around a given development. And to that, I think some of the projects, some of the projects, particularly downtown, I think there'll be other areas of what, as well, are important to more than just the people who live within, um, you know, the block around that project. There was a, a recent development on our civic block, the same block that has our library and Pioneer Park. And people said that that may be important to the whole city. So I think for some important, and I don't think that's the only side. I think for some important places, we have to recognize that they're important city-wide.
Thank you. And we'll hear from Ellen.
I think a lesson that we all learned during the pandemic is the reliance on local government in particular and how we need to be more proactive than reactive. So I, you know, shared a couple ideas with the last question, but I think in terms of building off of that, um, some good ideas are to lean more heavily on our, our neighborhood associations. I think they, we've been going to many candidate forums with neighborhood associations and they disseminate a lot of, of information to, to residents, which I think is really great and make sure that's earlier in the process. Um, and then maintaining online accessibility. Um, and, and having, and I think for R three, we actually built a website, but maybe not everyone knows about it or it's not in language. And so we need to make sure we do that. Something that I liked that the city did when we were looking in our housing element in particular was in front of the city plaza, we put maps and it was interactive and people could participate. And I think more opportunities for in-person, um, is important.
Thank you. Lee, you're up next. You're on mute, Lee. And.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. Uh, so I, I do think, uh, uh, let me, uh, present it from the perspective of, uh, regular residents. Um, I was participating in the Chinese Leadership Academy and I was observing the council meeting. And even with, I actually was, um, uh, having additional efforts and following the meetings. So, um, I think for a, a resident don't usually go to these kind of meeting, uh, getting a notice. They don't really know what that really means for them. And all these language R three are very foreign to the people, don't really know the coding of the zoning. And I think if you can use the layman term on the notice, say, um, why we were even notified and what this really means for me, for us, you know, for the people. And then maybe they will be more motivated to participate. I think it just, you know, the, 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 uh, the, to put a goal on, uh, the purpose of the meeting. I think even the, uh, the E P C person.
Thank you, Lee.
Okay.
The third question. Okay, what issues do residents mention to you most often? And then what do you reply? And our first respondent is Allison.
Well, I have to say, I'm, I was surprised. I've been to a lot of ice cream socials recently and talked to a lot of people and I've been surprised at how the, how the things people bring up have changed since four years ago. People bring up bike routes a lot and in part because of the tragic incident, uh, earlier this year when one of our middle school students was, um, killed in a bike incident. But also because they say they just want to bike downtown instead of, uh, drive downtown. There's, there's much more support for that. There's a lot of requests also. I think we've all been outside more during the pandemic. Um, there are a lot of people who say they love living in Mountain View, but, um, but the housing is not affordable enough. Um, those are the top three that I get, I would say.
Thank you. And Lee, you're up next.
Do you mind to repeat your question? I missed.
Yes, I'm happy to. Um, so what issues do residents mention to you most often? And what do you reply?
Yeah, since I'm not on the council, I think what I hear, uh, mostly from my neighbors are the petty thefts, which I've seen, uh, you know, the, the, the stuff dropped at the porch or be stolen. And that's one thing. The second thing, um, similar as what, uh, Allison brought it up is the, the bike, bike safety, especially the, the road, the safe, safe road to school program. And I, I think that's kind of concern for a lot of parents. And when I went to P T A, some, uh, parents was asking, uh, me, why wouldn't we have, uh, a public transportation for kids and take a bus to school? Um, the, the third thing is, uh, also related to the, 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 it's the traffic congestion. It's getting worse each day, uh, both at El Camino and Al Grant.
Thank you. And Lucas, your response.
Thank you. So the list, uh, shared both by Allison and, and Lee is substantially sim- similar to the list I would have shared. Um, as a response, I try to give a sense of what the city is, is able to do or the plans that we have in the process. So for, uh, traffic, uh, safety, for instance, bicycle pedestrian safety. We have a lot in the pipeline, including the El Camino Streetscape Plan, which will dramatically improve bicycle and pedestrian safety in El Camino. Uh, the California Street, Complete Street Improvements Project, very similarly, will transform that street and make it much safer. Uh, for parks and open space, the city is working on a Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, which will include strategies for acquiring new land for parks. It's very challenging, but, uh, I think this will be a, a major, uh, initiative that will help us achieve our goals. Um, and for homelessness, you know, as, uh, council member today had mentioned, uh, the work that we're doing with, uh, Life Moves and Safe Parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, your response.
Well, I think after people tell me how much they love living in Mountain View, they do tell me, um, that they're concerned about the, the cost of housing. They tell me that they are concerned about development and the rate of change happening in the city. And what does that mean? How are we prepared for that? And I think that's linked with climate change and sustainability and what's the city doing? And then, Mountain View, we're a community for all. And I think that there's a lot of concern about our unhoused, um, community and what more we can do. So, you know, I, in twenty-six seconds, it's difficult to say all the things I mentioned. But I would say that the city is working on programmatic elements for all of the topics that residents bring forward. And I think it reiterates to me how we need to be better about communicating that, whether it's the interim housing with the Life Moves Mountain View project that houses a hundred and twenty, uh, senior childrens and families. We just need to do better. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question. Okay, this is a little bit long, so pay attention and I'm happy to repeat it. Uh, Mountain View's state-mandated twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one Regional Housing Needs Allocation, also referred to as RENA, adds over eleven thousand new housing units for all income levels. Schools, services, roads, and other infrastructure expansion will be needed. So what is the city's role in supporting the consequences of increased housing? How can it partner with others in this support? And Lucas is our first responder on this question.
One minute, huh? So, I'll start by sharing, Mountain View is very fortunate to have a general plan that provides the residential capacity that we will need to achieve the RENA obligation. And that's critically important because that means we don't need to upzone large swaths of the city. It means that most of our growth is already planned. Uh, and the general plan was approved in twenty twelve and we're implementing it in, uh, through precise plans that include strategies to achieve, you know, the, to provide these services, amenities, and infrastructure necessary uh, to accommodate that growth. So for the most part, uh, our general plan and our precise plan already includes strategies to provide those amenities and services. Where we struggle a little bit more is with those elements that are beyond our control, like schools. And that means we have to work in close collaboration with each of the school districts. Uh, and probably we're, we're most familiar with the Los Altos School District Transfer Development Right Strategy. But we have to do something very similar with like Mountain View Wisman and the High School District as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. Allison, your response.
So yes, this is a, a hard one to tackle in a minute. But I'll say the, the four things that I look at the most in terms of infrastructure that we have to pair with, uh, the housing is, um, is schools, parks. Uh, well, I'll say three, schools, parks, and transportation. So for schools, yes, it's having a really good relationship with our schools. Um, also looking at our, um, at our, at different ways of providing schools. I went to a two-story school instead of a one-story school. Um, for parks, we have in-lu fees. And we're also seeing, we're, we're looking at parks right now in some of the areas that are underserved, Terabella and Monaloma. And some housing prices are going down, so I, I'm hopeful that our in-lu fees plus other revenue sources will help us address that. Um, I think in the one minute, I will not be able to address transportation. Maybe we'll come back to that at another time.
Thank you. Ellen, your response.
I think the city's responsibility is to take as much of a holistic approach as possible. And so as was mentioned, we have some planning documents that we've used, particularly our general plan and our precise plan to help make room for the RENA numbers that are state-mandated. And I think the clarification there is the, the city does not have control over our allocation. And so people expect us to, uh, provide, you know, basic city services and amenities. And I think what that really takes is collaboration, whether that be with the developer community and trying to get those important developer fees, housing impact fees, park fees, to get the amenities, um, as well as our, our, our schools and our, I would say, our nonprofits that serve, um, many of the residents. that serve, um, many of the residents in our, in our community. What I like about Mountain View is we always try to be forward-thinking. And I think as the mayor mentioned, the Los Altos School District Transfer Development Rights was one way we were trying to do that, as well as, uh, the city implemented a school strategy.
Lee, your response.
Uh, yes, I think there are numerous things, uh, city can do. And I, I do believe there are a lot of wishful thinking, uh, you know, uh, it's, excuse me for saying that. I don't see a very solid financial plan moving forward if, uh, urbanization is the direction to go for the city. And for instance, Shoreline District is a special district set up many, many years ago. And the city is taking the revenue of, uh, tech, 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 special tax for that special district and leverage it for, um, getting special, uh, financials, uh, on, on that leverage. And I do believe, you know, some of those source of income can be allocated to maybe create, create some additional park space for, uh, some, some part of the city has a park deficiency. Um, and also for school and, uh, uh, have a new school to be built, um, in City of Mountain View. It, it takes traumatic resources. And I don't think city has currently have a solid plan on that either. Thank you.
Okay, next question. Vacant stores along Castro and neighboring streets demonstrate the lingering effects of COVID and other business challenges. What efforts would you take to revitalize downtown and make it easier for new businesses to enter and reduce the number of those long empty storefronts? And Lee, you will kick off this question.
Yes, I actually just had a firsthand experience today when I was going to downtown visiting, uh, a friend. I, I just went into a, a restaurant I knew was there for at least 20, 30 years. And just the moment the store owner knew I was running for a CD com, so they just cannot wait to complain. So basically the pedestrian mall, uh, it benefits the stores at the beginning of the, the mall, at, at the end of them, two ends of the mall, or the, a lot of restaurants in between are suffering. So I do believe city, city really need to take a more, um, complete view and survey all the business, small business restaurants and, um, that, uh, the, 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 the last three blocks on, on Castro. Because, um, uh, there are a lot of restaurants are closing down because their business, except a few on both ends of the pedestrian mall, are, are really getting much less visitors, um, during the COVID year. And even after we're recovering, there's still suffering. Thank you.
We'll hear from Lucas now.
Thank you. I'm, uh, trusting my colleague, colleagues to fill in the gaps because we're doing a lot to address this. But I'll start with the Economic Vitality Strategy, uh, which will be a comprehensive, uh, evaluation of a number of different approaches to address this very problem. So are there changes in, uh, development standards, for instance? Are there zoning constraints? But also are there programmatic things we could do to incentivize, uh, or, or penalize, uh, you know, property owners who are keeping their commercial spaces vacant? And one of the ideas that the council had put forward is exploration of a commercial vacancy tax, uh, that would apply to chronic vacant spaces, right? So to give, uh, property owners a little bit of a push, uh, to start renting out vacant spaces and maybe reduce rents to something closer to what the market would actually bear, rather than some inflated market sense. But we've also invested a lot in ARPA funds, uh, to help keep small businesses afloat. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Allison.
Yeah, so this is the, um, making Castro Street car free has been one of the things that I've gotten, um, more compliments on than almost anything else we've done on council. At the same time, people have said that the, the number of vacancies is concerning, and I would agree. Um, I think, I think one of the main things we need to do is, um, really focus on place making. Uh, if you live, oh, let's say you live by the high school, you have a choice. When you maybe get in your car and decide to go out, you can go to Sunnyvale, Palo Alto, Los Altos, or downtown Mountain View. In order to attract people to our downtown, we really have to make it a destination. That our downtowns are no longer places where we go to department stores or shoe shopping as much as we will be entertained at night. And so I think that our economic vitality plan needs to be focused on just that. And luckily, the mayor has put myself and two other council people on an ad hoc downtown committee.
Ellen.
Well, as a granddaughter, oh, it's going, and the, and a daughter of small business owners, I've, I've really appreciated how the city has prioritized our small business. We actually have a small business plan that we're, uh, reviewing and hopefully should see at the end of year or early next year to, to figure out what we can do. Um, but I think it's also kind of in addition to the things that, uh, the mayor and vice mayor mentioned, it's also our permitting process. Sometimes our, those that want new businesses, it can take a long time for get their, you know, conditional use permit or their business license. How do we streamline that? Um, our Mountain View Downtown Business Association and our Chamber of Commerce deserves a really big and great shout out in terms of making sure that the city and the council, as well as our city, uh, downtown commission, in terms of making sure that council is, really has a better pulse on how things are going. I would say that's where we were able to close three blocks of Castro Street because we had a survey, um, done. And so it's a great start, but you know, I think need to do more.
Okay, new question, new topic. The city has committed to a target year of 2045 for reducing greenhouse gases and other emissions to achieve full carbon neutrality. What are your thoughts about these goals? Could they be reached earlier, much earlier? And if so, how? And Ellen is our first responder.
Well, as I had mentioned earlier, I'm really proud of how our residents in our city have prioritized climate change. I would say what's been most hopeful in my four years on council is actually how engaged and involved our youth are. You know, they, uh, would often come to us with different ideas. And I think that that has kept us as a council on our toes and trying to be, um, as aggressive as possible on how we deal with our, our climate crisis. So would I like us to reach our carbon, uh, you know, reduce our greenhouse gas emission, um, earlier than 2045? Yes, absolutely. In Santa Clara County, we, uh, are one of the cities that's leading the pack. But, um, I think that we also need to make sure that we're creating the, the infrastructure to get there. And so as we've been doing our development review process, we've looked at buildings are the largest emitters of gations that we make, that we are, um, putting forward, uh, rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Allison, your response.
So you're asking about our, our carbon neutrality goals and, and as, um, and council has put on its agenda the possibility of accelerating those goals from 2045 to something earlier, um, whether that be 2030 or 2035. Um, and we're looking at doing, the final decision has not been made, but we're looking at doing it in conjunction with other cities in the region. Because as you know, fighting the climate, climate crisis is not a race. If we do it in other cities, don't, we don't win the race. Um, one of the, we've seen that it usually works best if we tackle some big items. So the big item we're looking at right now, we've done all electric reach codes for our new buildings. And now we're tackling what we might do with our older buildings, which is more complicated, but we can use, uh, the Inflation Reduction Act money in order to incentivize that.
Um, thank, thank you.
My time is up.
Lucas, our next speaker.
Thank you. And it's nice to follow my colleagues. I largely agree with, uh, what Councilmember Kimay and Vice Mayor Hicks, who is also the Council Sustainability Committee Chair, uh, have already shared. Um, and I think the only thing I'll, I'll add is, uh, at, at the tail end of, uh, the Vice Mayor comments, she sort of alluded to, uh, the challenge with existing infrastructure. And we've done a great job with our very ambitious and aggressive building code in fully electrifying new construction, but new, existing buildings are more challenging. And so that's where funding from the federal government can help us incentivize property owners, uh, to shift from natural gas infrastructure to electric infrastructure and appliances. And one of the things that we might need to explore, if we want to be even more aggressive in achieving our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, is looking at something like, uh, an end-of-life ordinance. So as natural gas appliances reach the end of their lives, having an ordinance that would then make sure that we have, uh, electric infrastructure installed, uh, following. Uh, so that's a community conversation, folks, something we should explore. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, your response. Lee, you're on mute.
I don't know how that happened. So anyway, I just want to add it to the, uh, what the conversation, uh, previous candidates had. I think we, we can also, uh, decarbonize and increase efficiency of our city facilities, fleet and equipment. Um, you know, as everyone is, uh, mentioning here, we have, uh, a, a, a large, um, uh, federal incentive in the next 10 years, um, with, uh, the, the, the pass of the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022. Um, of course, and the difficulty as, um, everyone mentioned over here is the, the, the older, older buildings and the multiplying, uh, uh, multi-placks. And, um, so we, we do need to, uh, maybe not the, the federal incentive might not even be enough. Maybe city would have to provide some additional incentive for the, for the owner to, to, um, to be incentivized to, to install additional chargers, um, on these rentals. Um, I, I think that's all I can add.
Thank you. So our next question, um, Mountain View saw a jump in unhoused population since 2019. Has the situation improved during the last three years? And what has made the difference and what else could be done? And for this question, we're going to kick off with Allison.
The latest count, housing, the latest counts of unhoused people that I've read have not showed an improvement. Um, so if your question is what, what to do about that, I think that, um, I think most people agree that the main thing we have to do is build more affordable housing. Um, and there will, there is in the plans a regional, uh, housing mega bond that the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority is, is, uh, planning. And hopefully that will allow us to build a lot of affordable housing. Because in this expensive area, you cannot do it without some kind of subsidy. That said, building housing takes a long time and we need emergency solutions as well. And so as far as emergency solutions go, we have more, uh, safe housing parking spaces for vehicle residents than any other city in the county. And we are also doing other quick build projects like converting hotels and doing the Life Moves Tiny Homes.
Thank you. Um, Ellen will respond to the question next, and let me know if, if you would like me to repeat the question.
Well, I would say that the, uh, situation has, has changed because the number that's, you know, cited is 2019. And between 2019 and now, we have gone through a, a global pandemic. And one of the things that we've learned is that the, the gaps between our extremely low income and those who are able to afford, um, the, the rate of living has only increased. And so I, I would say, it's one of the things Mountain View has tried to do is make sure that we approach it in a two-pronged way, which is how do we keep residents in their housing? So that's, you know, rent relief, eviction moratorium, and how do we get people housed? I think that's looking at our project home key sites of the Crestview Hotel and Life Moves Mountain View. It's generating more affordable housing. It is updating our below-market rate ordinance. So I think we, we've tried, it's, it's our safe parking program. So I think it, that the problem continues to shift and the city tries to be nimble in how we approach it.
Thank you. Lucas, your response.
Thank you. So first, I want to agree with my colleagues, but focus on a point that Councilmember Kimay just made. It's important to remember that during the pandemic, thousands of people lost their income. Thousands of people were on the verge of homelessness, but never became unhoused. And so even though the, it mean, looked like we haven't made a lot of progress, the homeless population is probably very similar to what it was prior to the pandemic. That's actually a major victory. Because imagine if we had not had the rent relief program, the direct financial assistance program, or the eviction moratorium, the homeless population would have increased by many, many thousands. So let's appreciate that victory. But even then, there's still a need to do more. And as my colleagues have mentioned, the Life Moves Partnership, the interim housing, the safe parking has gone a long way to help stabilize families. We need more of that, but we also need to continue to invest in homeless prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, your response.
Uh, I do believe, uh, we need to focus more on homeless prevention program, uh, rent relief program, et, et cetera. Um, as once they are homeless, it takes at least 18 months to get into some kind of shelter. Sometimes it took up to five years to get off the street. On the application, a qualification process is very lengthy to get into the home key program as well. Some homeless people did tell me that they would prefer that the city can, can offer them better skill training program. They would rather to make enough income to get back to be able to support themselves. And I think, uh, Mountain View have, it's very, it's a very compassionate city and has developed good programs to help homeless people transition to a better life. But we need to encourage other city to step up. We need to work, uh, uh, now with other city to, to solve this regional pro, program, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new question. As we have learned over the past three years, without quality, affordable childcare, parents cannot go to work. What can the city do to address challenges of accessing childcare and preschool programs across our diverse communities? And Lee, you are our first responder.
Yes, this hit me really too hard. Uh, even though my kid now is in, uh, high school. And I remember vividly 10 years ago, when I was, uh, finished my maternity leave, trying to go back to work and I had a hard time to find anyone, um, I can trust, uh, to, to, to be, to be watching my kids. So I feel, uh, a safe, uh, at ease to go back to work. Um, I, I think it's, uh, I would encourage the city, um, work with, uh, you know, the, the company, create some onsite, uh, more additional onsite, uh, childcare. And that will make the parents' life much easier. Um, just, just the daycare center is really not enough in the city to, to, to help the younger parents out these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, your response.
Well, this one hits close to home as I'm trying to think of what to do for my eight-month-old. Um, but I will say, you know, this is something that council has been actively discussing and the city does have some partnerships with, with preschools. And, uh, one of the great things about the Economic Vitality Strategy that we've discussed is maybe pre-creating active uses and thinking of non-traditional uses. So for example, daycare, uh, when we were looking at our Lot 12 development, which is right behind City Hall next to the library, we actually, as a council, were thinking about, um, going out to bid for a daycare. And Santa, the Santa Clara County Office of Education, Foothill Deans, that both have daycare and preschool programs that they were interested in collaborating with us on. Part of it is the cost, right? And I think that's something that all of us can, can sympathize with, with the cost of, of living in the area. So I think it's about, um, looking at potential subsidies and partnerships to make more opportunities for, for childcare to happen.
Thank you. Allison.
Yes, I had two children, one right after another, so I certainly, a year and a half apart. So I certainly appreciate the, the difficulty looking for childcare and affordable childcare. I think one of the main things the city does in order to make, uh, daycare more accessible and affordable is the way we zone for it. Um, and Councilmember Kimay talked about some of that, some more opportunity, uh, some places that we could encourage. some places that we could encourage childcare more. In addition to some of the, and it would add to the economic vitality, maybe none of our main streets. You probably don't want to walk down Castro Street and look in and do daycare center, but some of our side streets. I also think another place that we have to look at is home-based daycare, making that so that it's more workable for for people who would like to do that kind of business out of their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas.
Thank you. And once again, I have the advantage of following my colleagues, so I agree with everything that they've said. And maybe just providing a little bit more detail. The council has made some minor adjustments to the zoning ordinance to allow by right childcare in certain zoning districts. And there's certainly more we need to do. And I agree with the examples that that both of my colleagues have brought up. And the other side of this, as has already been mentioned, is the cost. And I think this is a good opportunity to plug our direct financial assistance programs. There were two one-time check assistance through CSA and the Mountain View Solidarity Fund, which helps stabilize families, you know, immediately. But it's a little bit tough since most families will need ongoing support. And the guaranteed basic income pilot program, I think, will provide that ongoing support for the families who are eligible and and able to participate in that. And that $500 a month will go a long way in paying for essentials like daycare. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have come to the last question of the evening. And this question is, now, what is the question that you wish you were asked? And how would you answer that question? And Ellen, you are up first.
The question I wished I was asked was, what do you enjoy most about? Or what would you enjoy most about being on the city council? And my answer would be our youth. I chair, I chaired our youth services committee the last four years, and I am continually inspired by our next generation. They, we prioritized youth wellness in 2020 as a council, and we actually changed that from youth mental health. And I'm really proud because of the input from our youth that it's not just mental health. It's about kind of overall wellness. And last year, our our youth advisory committee had their first teen wellness retreat. And this year, they're having their second, and that is all youth-led. And last year, as mayor, I did mayor for a day for our elementary and a middle school student. And they had better ideas than council. So I am continually inspired. It is what keeps me going. And I think that that is what makes council enjoyable.
Hey, Lucas, your response.
Well, as a boring technocrat with no sense of humor, I wish you had asked about the R3 zoning update because that's something I care a lot about. And I think it's something that we need to do a better job as a as a council and as a city explaining to to residents who I think understandably are concerned about what appears to be, you know, a lot of growth occurring in a short amount of time. But really, as we've talked about in other forums, it's a strategy to address a major displacement impact that has already been occurring, right? Most of the redevelopment that has occurred has been in the R3 zoning district, older rent-controlled apartments, naturally affordable, all demolished. All of the people living in those apartments displaced, most of whom are not able to remain in the community. And the homes that are constructed instead are expensive. They're they build out the entire lot. You know, there's no open space, no affordable units. And they're terrible for seniors aging in place because they're multi-story ownership with no elevators. So we need to think about updating those development standards to get communities sort of outcome.
Thank you. Lee, what is the question you wished you were asked? You're on mute.
The question I wish you guys would ask would be, what didn't, what didn't you know about running for city council? What I didn't know was I had to spend, I had spent so much time going from door to door, drop, drop to flyers. And I I felt I was so embarrassed at the very beginning. I was like, oh, my God, you know, people are thinking, whoa, this person is crazy. So anyway, so I think it was really good experience that I go, I went into a lot of neighborhoods I don't normally go. And I've seen what Lucas just mentioned, the displacement issue is already occurring. I can see, I can just see those R3 zoning area. If those those complex apartment rental complex will be redeveloped, how difficult will be for the people actually live there? And as well, and and one of the okay, okay, yeah.
Allison.
The question I wish you would ask, well, the first thing is that when you're on on the city council, you can't be laser focused just on your favorite thing. So I'm glad you've asked a wide array of questions. I'm going to pick one that, you know, housing and sustainability are two of my main priorities. But I'm going to pick one that that you haven't asked as much about. So I'm very excited about a lot of the upcoming things that council is going to be doing, focusing on the out of doors. I think we've all, since the pandemic, wanted to be outdoors much more. And as a city planner, I'm focused on creating great public places like our Car Free Downtown. But we're also going to be updating our parks and rec plan. I think people really want different things from their parks and recreation. We're doing a biodiversity plan and urban forest tree plan. And I'm involved with a group called Green Spaces where the community gets involved. Although they creating all of plans.
Well, that ends the question round, and we are getting near the end of the forum. We probably are going to go a couple of minutes over. And now is the time to hear the candidates' closing statements. And so our first speaker is Lucas Ramirez. May we have your closing statement?
Sure, why not? Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. One more to go. I I often like to use this opportunity to share how much of a joy it has been to serve with my colleagues. We don't all agree in everything, but we're a thoughtful and remarkably productive council. And that I I would say that for all four years I've had the honor to serve. You know, I contrast that with cities that struggle a little bit more. And I often hear in endorsing interviews, wow, Lucas, I wish we could take some of the candidates running for Mountain View City Council and bring them to other cities because it's harder to recruit good quality candidates than others. So it's, it really has been amazing to serve on the council. We're accessible. We we've done amazing work. We have top-notch staff. And I I hope to have the good fortune to continue to serve and, you know, serve the community as best as I'm able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Kame, you may start your statement.
Great, thank you. Well, over the, over the last four years, I'm really proud of what our council's been able to accomplish together, whether it's COVID-19 relief efforts or supporting our local small businesses or creating public-private partnerships to bring affordable housing to our most vulnerable. It's been a, it's been a joy, and we're looking forward to tackling even more addressing our sustainability and resiliency goals as we combat climate change and work to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, as we were discussing earlier. As a third-generation Mountain View resident, I've seen the community change firsthand. And it's been really important to me that as we change, we're thinking about how do we preserve our past and make sure that our president is gonna have a great quality of life. So for my second term, I'm hopeful that we're able to accomplish some of those 2019 goals that the mayor and the vice mayor mentioned. I'll be number five on your ballot, EllenKame.com for more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Lee, you are our next, Lee John, you are our next speaker.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me on this forum. I would just really like you to know that since I graduated from this city of Mountain View's first Chinese Leadership Academy in the past spring, where I was inspired to become civically engaged. I thought the best way to contribute and make a difference would be to run for city council. The city has planned for sufficient housing development to meet state requirements. We now need to take the time and effort to ensure that we can sustain the growth with prudent investments in infrastructure and city services to maintain our high quality of life. I will take a balanced approach to development, ensuring that we stay economically strong and create healthy and complete neighborhoods. I will always meet with anyone and everyone who wants to meet. I would be honored to have your vote on November 8.
Thank you.
And number three on the ballot. Thank you.
Allison Hicks, what is your closing statement?
So I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this important forum and thank everybody who's attending and watching. I I concur with the mayor. It's been a pleasure to serve and a pleasure to serve with a great team on council over the past four years. I think the big picture is that I would like to you to vote for my reelection so that we can finish the things, the big goals that we put on our agenda four years ago, and we're interrupted by the pandemic. You know, a robust housing element, parks, biodiversity, better bike routes, more walkable downtown, all the things that we we tried to do before we were interrupted. In addition, the the one-minute answers have been very difficult. So if you want more information, you can go to my website at AllisonHicks4numbermv.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now that the candidates have made their closing statements, we're concluding this evening's forum. I would like to thank the candidates for participating and for their public service in running for political office. And many thanks to the volunteers of the League of Women Voters, Los Altos, Mountain View, who have made this evening's forum possible. The League of Women Voters believes that a democratic government depends on the informed and active participation of its citizens. And we hope that the insights that you have gained from this forum will help you in planning your vote. While you will receive your ballot in the mail this week, you can view your personalized ballot online by visiting the Voters Edge website at www.votersedge.org. Voters Edge provides information about the candidates, their priorities, and their major donors. And I would like to thank these four candidates for also participating in Voters Edge. Similarly, there is in-depth information on the seven statewide propositions that are on the midterm ballot. When this forum closes, our league's voter resources website webpage will appear. Visit this webpage to see the list of the league's election events. On that page, you will find links to recordings of election events that have already occurred. There's also information on how to register to vote, how to check and or update your voter registration, and where you will find ballot drop boxes and in-person voting locations. For the November 8 midterm election, please vote early. And go ahead, you can deposit your signed ballot in a ballot drop box or mailbox as soon as possible. Remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. It is your participation and making informed voting choices that help make our democracy work. Well, thank you. Have a great evening, and we will end the recorded forum now.